Good morning, I declare the Finance and Governance Committee Meeting Number 202404 open. Call the attendance, myself, councillor Madsen, councillor Johnic, mayor, councillor Harding, councillor Antonelli and councillor Madden. That's the full meeting, there's no apologies. Could I ask the deputy mayor, councillor Johnic, to read the acknowledgement of country?
Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda? No, thank you. Business outstanding, it's nil. Confirmation of minutes, would someone please move the confirmation of the minutes of the Finance and Governance Committee, 2024-03 of the 13th of August, 2024? Moved councillor Antonelli, seconded councillor Johnic. Any discussion on the accuracy of the minutes? I'll put the motion, all in favour. Against, that's carried unanimously. Officers' reports, first item is procurement security services contract award. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? No, I'll move the, sorry councillor. Yeah, you've got queries or questions? Thank you. We'll get the officer to, relevant officer to come forward please.
If I could just clarify, Chair, is it more the procurement process or more the substance of security and how it's...
And do we, do you think at this stage we'd need to move into a closed session?
Not necessarily, I'm just asking that the...
Okay, alright. Yep, thank you. Yes, thank you.
So I'm not sure if the officers heard, so it's the breakup of the contract, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, could you just state your name and title please?
Yeah, good morning, I'm Tim Steinhardt, Goods and Services category manager.
Councillor Antonelli?
Okay, yes, so when we did the procurement plan for this process, we were looking to do separate proportions for the security to ensure we've got adequate coverage and the supplies could meet all the requirements of the services. So we've got a proportion for the Safe City Monitoring Room and monitoring component, and also then a breakup of the mobile patrols, concierge services, foot patrol service, and then ad hoc services as well, which is provided on top of those services. So through the tender process, there was one supplier which was a better outcome in the monitoring side of it versus in the in front. So we went to market saying we could separate all these services, which is what the outcome has led to, to get the best value.
Thank you, no further questions.
No further questions, anyone else have a question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move the adoption of the recommendations A to E, is there a seconder? Seconder councillor Madden. Discussion, Mayor Harding?
Thank you Chair, I think one of the, it's great to see that this council continues to invest in great security services for our city. It makes a big difference to our society as a fast-growing city with a lot of young families as well. So it's good to see that council's continuing to have a lot, what's happening behind closed doors, I guess if we're doing a good job, most people don't know that it's there. So the work that we do with the 24/7 Safe City Camera Network and other areas is, I think, essential for our city, so very supportive of this report.
Thank you, any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all in favour. Against, that's carried unanimously. Item, numbered item three, procurement construction of new Silver Jubilee Park facility clubhouse. Is there any discussion required with the relevant officer? No, thank you. I'll move the adoption of that report, is there a seconder? Councillor Johnic? Deputy Mayor councillor Johnic, discussion. Councillor Johnic?
This gives me faith in my role here at council. I, we, together as divisional councillors, have been advocating for this clubhouse for a number of years now, fully understanding our limitations and our planning when it comes to asset management and budgets. I am so happy that this has come to fruition and want to thank the federal government as well for their grant to make this happen, and to the entire team from Go To Woe for getting this across the line, because so many people have had to be involved in this and it's, it means so much to the Springfield community. We've got some really great sports clubs in this new area and they've been advocating hard too. So I've had many a conversation with Don Stewart and I just honestly humbly thank everyone that has at some stage been part of this process to get it to this. I know it's a contract for construction, like it looks like nothing on paper, but actual like the, it's the vibe, alright? It's a clubhouse for our people and it makes such a difference to their, these clubs, their social standing, the way that they can raise revenue for their players and then, and how their group functions and how they can grow and how our community then grows. And hands down to everyone, like, every, like I'm just so pleased. I can't, I would dance if I was allowed to, but I don't want to get kicked out, Chair, so thank you, everybody. That is all.
I could have made many comments during that, but I don't want to end up in the LIA with that. Is there any other discussion? Councillor Madsen?
Yes, I just wanted to thank yourself Chair and the deputy mayor for your patience as divisional councillors. It's always an issue getting sporting fields and then having to await for a clubhouse. You've both been really reasonable and fair-minded about how to fund that. And yeah, thank you for that. Thank you for being reasonable and fair and all of the above.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mayor Harding?
Thank you Chair, this is something that our council has been looking forward to for some time, probably, obviously it's marking that Silver Jubilee of Springfield 25 years at the time, and it was a pleasure to formally officially open that park in April last year. And as a council, we have been advocating very strongly, I think all of us, for the changing rooms. It's wonderful to see, it looks like about two thirds of it is funded by the federal government, which is, which makes a huge difference for us as a council to be able to deliver on that. So that's a fantastic result. And I think the councils too for making sure that the other million dollars from councillors also been allocated and provided as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll just make some very brief comments. It is good to get federal and or state funding and every, every one of the 77 councils in Queensland certainly appreciates this. As councillor Johnic indicated, in a variety of ways, it's a really, really great day for Ipswich and for the eastern suburbs and the Springfield area in particular. And there has been a lot of lobbying, I guess might be the right word, but putting in comprehensive and detailed submissions to be able to get this funding. And whenever we have, let's say anywhere in the city, people have got different views, it's always money for local government, anything we do, whether it be roads, whether it be libraries, whether it be art galleries, or parks or sporting facilities, it's always a value judgment of where money should be spent. But I think that this will be a very supported decision by the local community. And it's just an opportunity, I guess I'd like to thank publicly Shane Newman, the member for Blair as the local federal member, you know, working together to get facilities of this nature. So it's a real opportunity and councillor Johnic, I think you hit the nail on the head, it's really a, I used to call them red letter days. I'm not sure that's politically appropriate now to use that, but I do share your genuine excitement about this recommendation. I'll put that motion, all in favour. Against, that is carried unanimously. The next item is the headed, the surrender of Two Tallagalla, Two Tree Hill Road, Tallagala. That's the trusteeship. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? Mayor, yeah, not, sorry, the relevant officer come forward please. Do, Mayor, do you think we need to move into a closed session at this stage?
No, oh, I guess the council officer Chair, we'll let us know.
It will be what it is, thank you. Just a name and title please?
Good morning, Alicia Reek, Property Services Manager.
Thank you very much. Through the Chair, who would cover the cost for this transaction?
There would be no cost to this transaction, so council is the trustee of the land. And what this essentially would do is support this organisation going to the state to get trusteeship.
Okay, so it won't cost council or rate pays it, okay. What measures are being put in place to ensure the heritage value is being preserved?
Look, I may have to take that on notice, that the purpose assigned to that trust land has a heritage purpose. So I would assume that if, say for instance, the trusteeship is with this organisation, the state would be working with them to have all those parameters enforced. Also, with any sort of rehabilitation works to the property, we would have a feedback from a local authority through the planning action.
Thank you. Have we gone out to the community to see if any other groups may be interested in taking this site on?
This has been quite a complex site to get activated. Council has not taken it out to the community. This has been a submission that's come forward, that's met every purpose that's assigned to this trust. This has shown, yeah, a very good case towards what they want to do to that location. And also the business case has aligned with a number of different locations around Queensland where they have had a similar arrangement in place as well. With this particular property, there has not been a lot of budget or focus on how this could be activated and rehabilitated. So I think with any sort of open market approach and aligning with both the three purposes assigned to this trusteeship, it would be quite challenging to find something aligned to this actual application that's come specifically to us.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes Chair.
Councillor Madden?
I'm just reading from the report and I notice we have a heading that says, "Community and Other Consultation", but it appears from that, the information provided, the only consultation was with council offices or searches undertaken by council offices of state government. We're currently undertaking community consultation, oh, we're waiting for the final results of community consultation for Western Resource Recovery Centre. We've finished community consultation for the Rocky Gully Cemetery, Rocky Gully Road Cemetery. Why was it not considered necessary to consult with the Tallagala community, given that this building is the last public building in Tallagala, surviving from the period when it was a thriving community, even the Catholic Church was moved away? Why was it, why did council officers, because you were the ones that made the decision, why did you decide that we didn't need to go to Shape Your Ipswich or do any, even talk to the neighbours about this?
This is trust land, so we are the trustee of the site, we are not the owner of the site, and it has those three dedicated purposes for the historic heritage and educational sort of purpose. We've had a number of different inquiries from the community over years, which have very much aligned to a residential purpose, which is inconsistent with this facility. So with the community consultation part of it, that could actually occur with the state. If we were to surrender the trusteeship, it would, I guess, take the trusteeship from council and it would be the state and this organisation to work directly on those sort of outcomes.
I appreciate your advice, but the state doesn't conduct anything like Shape Your Ipswich, but we can. Why is it not possible for us to do community consultation? And just getting back to your point about it's only a trusteeship. I mean, as a trustee, we decide who uses the sites. When we hand it back to the state government, they will decide who uses the site. So as a trustee, you have the same powers as you do in freehold to do whatever you wish to the land. Mind you, you do it in our situation by letting perhaps a community group. But I'm still perplexed why we've dismissed the possibility of Shape Your Ipswich. And I don't accept that, well, we'll hand it over to the Queensland Government and they could do it. I mean, we are here today...
Sorry, excuse me, through, may I, through the Chair? The officer has provided the recommendation in her response. It is a matter for the committee if you...
That's right, this is a series of questions, I probably should have jumped in a little bit earlier. That's probably for the debate on this matter.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Yeah, that's not too critical at all, it's just how this sometimes happens, because we're, we need to do those steps in order. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, I have no further questions. I'll make a contribution.
Yes, in a moment, yeah. Are there any other questions or queries? Thank you very much. Okay, for the purposes of discussion, I will move the recommendation as printed. Well, you can either have an, will need to be moved and seconded before we have an amendment unless you, okay, so I'll move it for discussion purposes, seconded councillor Johnic. Can I just say briefly, the heading to the report, and this is an important distinction, but it might change how we might proceed, the recommendation, sorry, the heading to the report in the first, on the fourth line says, "Surrendering the trusteeship and recommend the Silver Lining Foundation Australia take responsibility of the trustship". Those last few words don't actually appear in the actual recommendation, it's just to surrender the trusteeship. So just having made that point, that may or may not assist in a proposed amendment. So discussion or amendments? Councillor Madden?
I've read my amendment.
Yes.
The amendment would be to take out the words "resolved to surrender". So the amendment, the full amendment would read that council received the report regarding the trusteeship of surplus land at Two Tallagala, Two Tree Hill Road, Tallagala, more particularly described as Lot 557 on Plan CC3651, in brackets, council file reference 6221, with the report to be held over to a future meeting of the Finance and Governance Committee to allow a time for the council officers to undertake community consultation via Shape Your Ipswich. That's my amendment.
Can you just check that the wording's been written, transcribed correctly?
Yep, that's fine Chair.
Is there a seconder, you're moving that as an amendment? Thank you, is there a seconder? Second, second councillor Antonelli, the mover of the amendment, first of all?
Yeah, as I started to say, Chair, you know, we know Tallagala now more from the Tallagala Road than Tallagala Community. At one time it was a thriving community, had a Catholic Church, had shops, had the school, had enough young children that they could go to a school, but the Catholic Church has been moved, it's currently located at Woodlands. This is the last public building in this area, and so I receive regular correspondence about this building. I know that the residents of Tallagala and Marburg would like to be consulted with regard to this. The first I knew about this was when I read the report. I noticed a section that talks about community consultation and other consultation, doesn't seem to include the local councillors, which I think needs to be addressed. So this would allow, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't accept the draft recommendation, but I think we, to the, for the people of Tallagala and surrounding areas, given that this is really an iconic collection of buildings, that we need to go to public consultation. And bear in mind, when you sort of set the bar for community consultation, we've just finished community consultation and waiting on the report for the new Western Resource Recovery Centre. Similarly with the Rocky Gully Road Cemetery, we went to community consultation on those issues. It's easy to say that we're surrendering the trusteeship back to the Queensland Government, I regard that as flippant. What we're basically doing is surrendering any control over this building back to the Queensland Government, knowing who is, who is going to be the new trustee. And I think that we owe it to the residents of this area and people interested in this area. It's not only, as with the Pine Mountain community, it's not only people that live in an area that want to know what's happening in that area, it's people that have family connections to that area. We could be talking about, you know, tens of thousands of people that have a connection to this area. And I think if we're going to set the bar at, you know, upgrading cemeteries and locations for resource recovery centres, I think this qualifies for community consultation. And Shape Your Ipswich seems to be the vehicle that we prefer to use, that we do community consultation on this project. And then the matter can come back, after having received the results of community consultation, the matter can come back to this committee to be decided at a future date whether we accept the original recommendation and that is we surrender the trusteeship of this property. Those are my submissions.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mayor Harding?
Just to the amendment, I think councillor Madden for raising this, I was just thinking, Shape Your Ipswich is a digital platform, I wasn't sure whether councillor would like to broaden that to be just community, undertake community consultation in line with the community engagement policy, which, or just community consultation, in consultation with the divisional councillors or something like that. Just, I'm just concerned that's just digital and maybe, I don't know if you would like to do a face-to-face consultation or a mobile office or, that was my... Sorry Chair?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I think we're at a point where we might be doing a little bit of wordsmithing, to just change some words at the end if that's agreeable to the mover and seconder of the amendment.
Having, having been given a briefing on exactly how Shape Your Ipswich sort of works and the numbers and that, from that area, I think that limiting it to Shape Your Ipswich might not be the best way. So certainly I would agree with the Mayor's inclusion of the community engagement policy, I think it is, is it not? Yeah.
I'm happy to amend the amendment, to accept those words.
To, in line, yeah, in line with the community engagement policy. Does that cover your intention, Mayor?
Because part of that is engaging councillors early and getting feedback from us is probably the first step.
Is that acceptable to the mover of the amendment and the seconder? So that becomes part of the main motion? Oh, yeah, the main motion now? Is there any other discussion? Councillor Antonelli, your green light is on.
Oh yes, well I initially moved the, seconded the amendment just to ensure that we got discussion on the matter. I certainly agree that with something like this, we do need to engage with the community. I remember the late Frank Snars, who was very influential in Rosewood and Marburg area in relation to the protection of these types of properties. And I believe he also had a degree of influence on what would happen with this property. And I think that Frank too, if he was alive this day, would want to have a say or be involved at least in the process, to know what was going on with the future of this property.
And again, that's not, that's not putting aside the merits of what has been presented in the report.
Thank you Chair, may I please just, for the committee, for the record, just note that the officers involved would certainly have not made the recommendation on a flippant basis. If I could just note that please for the record, Chair.
Is there any further discussion on the, it's now the amended motion?
I was checking, the motion's now amended, that's correct?
Yes, that was agreed to by the, as, it was agreed to by the mover and seconder of the amendment. So that's the motion before the committee now.
I guess I thought we were to make sure that, you know, the Ipswich Heritage Network, this would be something that, this is right up their wheelhouse, they would definitely want to be engaged on this as well there. So yeah, it was part of our consultation, we would definitely want them to be part of that. And these are the kind of things that they're actually really keen to hear about.
Yeah, and I'll just say, it's obviously a community issue, there's a lot of history to that Tallagala area. I think, Mayor, we were out at the cemetery for a photographic opportunity about 18 months ago. It's certainly a very beautiful drive from Rosewood through to Marburg there, you know, on that road. So I'm familiar with that area generally, but I think it's an opportunity for the engagement of the community and the local councillors as well. Is there any further discussion? No? I'm just trying to, was, no, the amendment's been agreed to, was it, was myself or you the original mover? I think I moved it for discussion purposes, that's correct, isn't it? Yeah, so is it, if there's no further discussion? Yeah, certainly. Yeah, certainly.
I just want to mention tonight I'll be doing my usual report to the Marburg and District Residents Association, it's very important those words in, and district, because the Marburg and District Residents Association area of influence certainly takes in Tallagala and all the other communities in that area and, you know, I know that they would like to be consulted about this in whatever form, perhaps a council officer could attend one of their monthly meetings and explain what is planned with regard to this, this property.
Thank you, I'll put the motion all in favour. Against? Sorry. Sorry. I'll put the motion all in favour, against, that's carried unanimously, notices of motion, nil, matters arising, nil. We have an item from councillor Doyle requesting consideration of being, for being appointed to this committee and I will move that councillor Doyle be appointed to the Finance and Governance Committee, is there a seconder? Seconded councillor Antonelli, is there any discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour, against, that's carried and we don't need a motion to, the next meeting will be 10 minutes from the close of this one, is there, I take it there's no further business, I'll declare this meeting closed at 10.40am.